Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Labor and Workforce Committee. I am Jermaine Jones, Chair of the Committee and Representative of the 12th District. Today, the committee will hear Bill Number 25-0051, Labor and Employment Pregnancy Accommodations. In attendance, we have Councilman Ryan Dorsey, Councilman James Torrance,
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Felicia Porter,
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And the sponsor of our bill, Councilman Paris Gray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Several representatives from the Mayor's Office are here, all from the Mayor's Office is here as well, along with members from council services. All right, let's begin. Bill 25-0051, for the purpose of requiring responsible or reasonable accommodations in the workplace for certain employees upon request, protecting employees from adverse actions related to pregnancy, recovery from childbirth, or related condition, forbidding denial of employment opportunities based upon certain circumstances, establishing penalties for violations of required accommodations, defining certain terms in generally relating to protecting the rights of employees who are pregnant or recovering from childbirth or related conditions. This bill was introduced on April 7, 2025, sponsored by Councilman Gray. So just a few opening remarks from myself. We'll start. Just excited to hear about, you know, to have a discussion on this legislation, which is really important. There's one thing we all have in common. We were birthed by a woman, and we came here through a woman, and that woman protected us. And, well, you know, protected us, and I'm looking forward to conversation that we can also protect them. Because the fact of the matter is, when employees, the fact of the matter is, we would like to ensure that when an employee becomes pregnant or is recovering from childbirth, they aren't punished or pushed out of a job or denied opportunities for simply asking for reasonable accommodations. Far too often, the people most impacted by lack of protection are those living paycheck to paycheck. The cashier who stands on her feet for eight hours without a stool, the hospitality worker who's denied a modified shift, or even the nurse's aide who may be forced or asked to lift beyond the weight restriction, and their employer refuses to adjust their duties. These women, these people are working women, often overwhelmed, working low-wage jobs, women of color, and single heads of households who can't afford to lose a day's pay, and let alone their entire livelihood. So I look forward to a great discussion on how we can address some of these issues and make sure working women have the protections they deserve in a time in which they're most vulnerable. So I thank you, and I will now move it on to the sponsor of the bill.
Thank you, Chairman. Before I start, I just want to give a huge shout out to Dr. Taylor and Be More for Healthy Babies. This morning, I was honored to attend the Rattle and Roll and visited a few pediatric facilities where we hand in important resources to those providers, to give to clients and moms, to prevent infant mortality, but also give them the tools they need to make sure that our kids in Baltimore have a great start and the best start to determine the outcomes that we would like to see in the city of Baltimore. So I just wanted to give you huge kudos and a big kudos to Be More for Healthy Babies. Colleagues, this bill is about protecting pregnant women and new mothers in the workplace. It is about making sure that no one has to choose between keeping their job and taking care of their health or their baby. What this bill does is simple and fair. It requires employers in Baltimore to make reasonable accommodations for workers who are pregnant, recovering from childbirth, or dealing with related conditions. That might mean allowing more frequent breaks, modifying a schedule, or offering light duty when needed. These are small, common sense adjustments that help people stay employed and stay safe during pregnancy. It also makes sure that every employer has a written policy accommodation, a written pregnancy accommodation policy, and gives employers a clear way to ask for support. And we've made enforcement practical, handled through civil citations instead of criminal penalties. So the goal is compliance and accountability, not punishment. At the end of the day, this bill is about dignity and fairness. It says that in Baltimore, in this Baltimore, we value working families, and we're going to make sure that bringing a child into this world doesn't mean making a difficult choice between your livelihood and your life or your child's life. I hope I get all of my support from my colleagues, and thank you for hearing my bill today.
Thank you. We will now move on to agency reports, and we'll start with the Law Department. Are there anyone? Okay.
I'm right here. Yeah. Good afternoon, Desiree Lucky, on behalf of the Law Department. As contained in our bill report, we just have two small amendments that we're proposing, which are related to the proof of necessity provision, as well as the waiver provision. So Section 20-3(c) of the bill authorizes an employer to require proof of necessity for reasonable accommodation. The Pregnant Workers Fairness Act, which is federal law, which provides for reasonable accommodations for pregnant workers, does not require documentation for all reasonable accommodations, but it does outline the circumstances where it's reasonable for employers to ask for that documentation, as well as outlines what sort of documentation is reasonable. So we did go ahead and say that we should remove that provision because the PWFA allows for local and state laws that give more expansive protections, but this was something that could make it more challenging, so it's not as expansive as the PWA. And then the Second Amendment relates to the waiver of variance for undue hardship. Because the reasonable accommodation process is an iterative process, since we're basing it on the ADA's reasonable accommodations provisions, that's going to be specific to each employer and each employee. So it wouldn't really be possible for an organization to say that they can't provide something due to an undue hardship in every circumstance, because that is an individualized process. So the Second Amendment removes Sections 24 and 20-2b from the bill, and we can approve for legal form and sufficiency with those amendments.
All right, thank you. We'll just save all our questions, I guess, after the, um, pre, after our agency reports. So I'll now move on to Department of Finance.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. My name is Gabriel with the Finance Department. We do not oppose this bill. We think that it'll bring stability to many workers in the city, and we do not believe it'll have a large monetary impact to the city itself. The benefits for low-wage workers will be, cannot be, can't really be quantified as well, and it's important to note that bringing stability to people's lives and jobs is also important and has better outcomes for the city as a whole.
I thank you for that report. The Mayor's Office of Equity and Civil Rights.
Good afternoon, Chair Jones. My name is Zachary Wellman. I'm the Equity Policy Analyst for the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. The Office of Equity and Civil Rights requests a favorable committee report on the legislation. Fortunately, our, you all did not receive our report, so if I may take a few minutes just to read through, so you guys can get the gist of our opinion on the legislation.
Yes, please do.
Thank you. So the Office of Equity and Civil Rights has reviewed and is hearing reporting on City Council Bill 25-051, Labor and Employment Pregnancy Accommodations. City Council Bill 25-051 enshrines pregnant workers' rights to reasonable accommodations in employment, a duplication of the protections passed federally in the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act, Division 2 of the Consolidated Appropriations Act 2023. This piece of federal legislation tasks the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, or EEOC, with enforcing and adopting rules to implement the requirements of the policy in alignment with the Community Relations Commission, or CRC, existing contractual relationship with the EEOC to receive, investigate, and resolve deferred cases from the EEOC. City Council Bill 25-051 would empower the CRC to accept federally deferred cases of pregnancy accommodations, pregnancy accommodation violations filed against Baltimore City government and private employers. As for the fiscal impact of this legislation, in order to ensure the Community Relations Commission has sufficient capacity to investigate, review, and adjudicate reported violations of the protections enshrined under the bill, the OECDR staffs the commission with five investigators and one chief of the CRC division. This level of staffing to the commission would be adequate to accommodate the additional caseload, and as such, there would be no necessary budgetary changes or fiscal impacts to OECDR. The OECDR supports the amendment submitted by Councilman Gray, the sponsor of City Council Bill 25-051, to alter the penalties for violation of the ordinance. In its introductory form, Section 20-10 Criminal Penalties requires that a person who violates any provision of Subtle 20 is guilty of a misdemeanor and subject to a penalty of not more than $500 per offense. Alternatively, the sponsor's amendment provides that violations be subject to civil penalties of $1,000 per violation, as the city is empowered to do so under Article 2, Subsection 48 of the Baltimore City Charter, while vesting the Law Department with the responsibility for legal recourse in the event of noncompliance with the CRC judicial and/or pellet findings. The OECDR supports the pregnancy accommodation protections established under City Council Bill 25-0051, and is in alignment with the necessity for enforcement of these protections. The office concurs with the sponsor that violations should not be classified as a misdemeanor. Such a penalty would be excessive enforcement of the law and contribute to overcriminalization that could disproportionately affect small minority, mostly black, and people of personal color employers in Baltimore City rather than large employers with limited individual liability. The OECDR believes that, as a policy enforced by the CRC as well, this legislation should follow a similar structure to the penalty for employment discrimination as outlined under Article 4, Community Relations of the Baltimore City Code. Additionally, this, we believe this increase to $1,000 per violation should sufficiently deter employer noncompliance without being overly punitive, such would a criminal penalty be. So overall, we are in alignment with the sponsor's submitted amendment and agree with the legislation as well as the amendment. The OECDR deeply supports the initiative to bolster workplace equity for pregnant individuals, and we discern no inequity in the intent, purpose, nor potential impact of the bill provided the Labor and Workforce Committee's adoption of the sponsor's submitted amendment. As such, the Office of Equity and Civil Rights requests a favorable committee report on City Council Bill 25-0051. Thank you.
Thank you for that report. Department of Health?
Good afternoon, Chair Jones and members of the committee. My name is Dr. Michelle Taylor, Baltimore City Commissioner of Health. Councilmember Gray, thank you for introducing this important bill. While we already have federal and state laws about workplace accommodations for pregnant and postpartum people, this bill strengthens and expands those rights. It can also protect them in the event that federal protections are repealed. This bill goes beyond the federal law by applying to businesses with fewer employees, and beyond the state law by applying to businesses with fewer employees and to qualifying individuals who don't have a disability, but who nonetheless, excuse me, need accommodations. As the local health department, the Baltimore City Health Department greatly appreciates the importance of workplace accommodations for pregnant and postpartum people. We respectfully request a favorable report on the bill and are happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Department of Human Resources?
Good afternoon. Russell Neverdone, on behalf of Policy and Compliance Department of Human Resources. Thank you all for allowing us to have an opportunity to weigh in on this important bill. We believe here at the Department of Human Resources that this accommodation is imperative to the Baltimore City being able to move in the direction that it has with respect to its caring and taking care of its employees. As such, with respect to the bill as written, we did recommend the amendment as to, our First Amendment, which is on Page 7, Line 27. We ask that there be a striking of the number 5 and substitute with number 10 as it pertains to the time period in which an employer would respond. Our rationale behind this was that, as we were looking in our process of trying to make sure that we were in keeping with the ADA, which does allow for 10 days, we believe that by extending this timeframe, it helps us ensure a fair and legally sound interactive process without imposing an impractical five-day turnaround that could hinder compliance or delay accommodations. Specifically with this process is, we took into consideration that there would be persons who unfortunately may be dealing with not physically there, having to try and navigate through their medical personnel, and we know that with a doctor's office, the timeframe that may be involved with that, that five-day period could expire before you know it, and then we're having a compliance issue. So therefore, the 10 days in keeping with the ADA, we believe, would be reasonable, appropriate, and in keeping with the standard. We also looked at Amendment Number 2 on Page 8, Line 24, which indicates we would insert an employer may distribute an employee the policy required by this section via electronic means if the employer provides the employee a paper copy of the policy upon request and the electronic means allows for the employee to confirm receipt of the policy. As you're aware, Baltimore City has gone through multiple changes with its data systems and its management systems, rather. So while we're now dealing with Workday, this is yet another platform in which we're dealing with things electronically where there's a transmittal. Because we also looked at the fact that while we have some telework situations, we may have persons coming off of an FMLA situation, or they're in between trying to get things straight, we thought about that process, making sure that they're noticed, that they are receiving that documentation electronically. The Workday system does allow for the transmittal of a lot of documentation, and in keeping with that, we also thought about the average employer. Most are now beginning to take advantage of technology as of today, where a lot of things are happening through the IT realm and service. So with that being said, we thought that it was important to make sure that the electronic means is another opportunity with the keyword or operative word being "may", and not that they shall, but also making sure that there is a mechanism on that electronic transmittal, that there is confirmation. In Workday, you can track when an employee actually opens a document or is actually looking, whether there be a, an assignment that's been given to them, whether it's a training. You, as a manager or supervisor, can actually see when that has been accessed. And so that would act as a mechanism to see that and have verification. So that was our Second Amendment. While we did make comment for the Third, we would, we probably think it would be prudent to just defer to that because we spoke on the criminality aspect of it, but we were speaking more from the vein of HR employees for Baltimore City and wanting to make sure that we were protecting them from not willfully doing something but trying to act in the best interest of that person and making a mistake. I believe the Department of Finance, as well as, I believe OECDR had already addressed the issue of the criminality and looking at an alternative which probably is more in alignment from a civil penalty as opposed to one that's more punitive in nature. With that being said, that would be the response and support of the Department of Human Resources. We do stand in support of the legislation as written.
Thank you for that report. At this moment, is there any necessary presentations? All right. Questions?
Well, I have my amendments as well. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, as far as your amendments, you want to?
Yeah, I can just go through explanation. I have three amendments. They are all available in colleagues' inbox. We sent them early this morning. They may be printed out. But Amendment 1 replaces the, the, enforces a civil penalty instead of a criminal penalty. And so it replaces the criminal misdemeanor penalty with a civil one, and it ensures accountability without criminalizing employers. The goal of this is to handle most labor and employment violations with the goal of achieving compliance and not punishment. And so we thought that the civil, the civil penalty would be adequate enough, and we took out the criminal penalty. The second one is just clarifying the enforcement, and it just cleans up the bill's structure, so the enforcement language is clear and consistent, confirms that the civil citations are the main enforcement tool, and that the commissions and courts will still retain their authority. It's a procedural clarification that strengthens the law and how it actually functions day to day. And the third one removes the undue hardship waiver process and medical note requirement. That one centers around trust and accessibility. It removes the red tape that could delay or discourage accommodations. Employees can still claim the undue hardship if truly warranted, but there's no separate waiver process to preemptively opt out. And so those are the three amendments that, that we are offering.
Just want to ensure every member had a copy of Councilman Gray's amendments. Okay, cool. All right. At this point, I'll entertain any committee questions. Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Taylor, you mentioned the ways this bill goes beyond the federal or state standards, and particularly the reduction of the number of employees, I guess. I'm just curious. I'm not familiar with the federal. I'm not familiar with the state. I'm just curious, like, what that threshold is, this bill says, any employer of two or more full-time employees. What is that number in the federal state?
For both federal and state, it's 15 or more employees. And the difference between the two laws is that, under the federal law, it's employers with 15 or more employees to provide pregnant and postpartum employees with a reasonable accommodations end statement. For Maryland state law, it's that same thing, but it's reasonable accommodations for people who have a disability that is contributed to or caused by pregnancy. So that's the little difference in the law there between federal and state. But the threshold is 15 or more for both.
The federal is actually more encompassing than the state?
Yes, it is.
Interesting. And these have been around for how long?
Great question. I cannot answer that off the top of my head. Sorry.
I assume then that, I'm just curious about generally the impacts to the city government, or like, I mean, we obviously already have a policy that enacts all of this, and we obviously employ more than 15 people. Just out of my own curiosity, I'd love to know what the city's, I don't, I'm not familiar with the city's policy. Could we just have that sent to us?
Yeah, we can, we can, I can work with the HR to send our pregnancy accommodation policy to the committee.
Great. That's all. Thank you.
I'll give some context of state law. The state law was targeted after a number of women who had congested heart failure and other disabilities after pregnancy. So the state focuses on dying, on people who have disabilities, whereas the federal law is more encompassing in terms of everybody. But we saw that there was ample discrimination after pregnancy for just the disabilities that resulted from it.
Thank you for that clarification. Councilwoman Porter?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. And also to add additional context, it was any pregnancy-related, any pregnancy-related complication. So if mothers had, you know, they couldn't come back to work in time, and so they had difficulty as they are coming back to work, they would still have reasonable accommodations after pregnancy. And I wanted to ask, what is the definition of reasonable accommodations? Do we have that defined somewhere?
Reasonable accommodation is actually identified with the Department of Human Resources under our administrative manual in BBMR. But the short and skinny of it is, is basically the employer or the city in this case would be providing, taking into account what the condition of that person and provided does not unnecessarily or unduly place a burden on them to provide reasonable means for them to be able to fulfill their job obligations without there being a difficulty that either places greater strain on the physical ailment that is being complained of, or not placing such a burden that it becomes impossible or impractical with respect to the burden placed upon the city or the employer.
Sure. So when we talk about our service workers, and I just don't want to talk about the, I just don't want to focus on the city of Baltimore, because this bill would impact quite a few employers in the, in the city of Baltimore. And so one-third of our population here, well, one-third of our industry is hospitality. And so how are we going to ensure that this law maximizes the reasonable accommodations for that industry? And we can talk about, like, dietary workers within our hospitals. We can talk about service workers. In general, how are we connecting those dots there?
Yeah, and, and that's a good question, Councilwoman. I'm not sure we have an answer, right, for, just for the folks that we have in this room today, because obviously our concern, well, you know, with Russell and HR is internal to city employees, the Health Department, right, with their employees, and same thing. That could be something that we take back. And even, it's not, it's not super clear, and maybe that's a question for the sponsor.
And that's, and that's why I'm asking, because of the ambiguity of the law. I want to make sure that, you know, we are providing some sort of, and this is for the bill sponsor as well. I know you've done quite, quite a job on this. I want to make sure that if we are actively talking about reasonable accommodations, we have standards that we are utilizing, not only just from the federal level, but here within this. Okay. Here, I thought you was going to tell me something. Here within this law that we, you know, we have that standard. We typically do those standards of care for many type of, of, of health outcomes. I want to make sure that we have some sort of standard of care related to that reasonable accommodation as well.
Yeah, and, and because the, the way the law is written, it looks like it is the Community Relations Commission that is, that will be tasked with enforcement implementation. So that's something that I'll ask Zachary to take back to OECDR with Chief Burton to talk about what implementation, you know, with the CRC would look like. Because there are other things in signage requirements and other pieces in the, in the current code that CRC enforces and make sure that employers are following.
Sure. And so, thank, thank you for that, Tyler. If we can actually have a status update in about 30 days upon passage of this bill?
So 30 days after it gets signed?
Okay, that's fine. Yep. Okay, my next question actually has to do with, with city employees. How are we protecting against the retaliation of, of employees if for by chance they don't want to adhere to the reasonable accommodation? So what I am thinking about, again, is our women that work within our industries that are typically male-dominated, and they are not, they are not the majority of the, of the population within said agency. How are we ensuring that that doesn't, that goes, that we're monitoring that? But also from a city, how we're communicating that to our agencies?
So with respect to the, that would actually fall under our EEO because we're, we're talking about, for all intents and purposes, a temporal disability, if you will. So if we have a employee who has dealing with some complications from the pregnancy, either during the course of the pregnancy or postpartum complications, and then they then go to their chain of command and say, hey, I'm having some difficulties, and I need some, some accommodations made for me, and then that is denied, then they still would have the ability to challenge that under the local, as well as independently, if they're not satisfied with what happens internally, they could also look through so at the state level as well and say, listen, I made a complaint. I've asked for some accommodations. They were not given. I'm still dealing with the complications and difficulties, and therefore, something needs to be done. And so the EEO would then, that part of it would then kick in, and investigation would be initiated to follow up with, whether or not there was an adherence to the policy within DHR that that person was. They followed the process. The request was made, and the necessary paperwork or, and steps were taken to ensure that this person was actually acknowledged, that it was processed, and that they went forward with respect to trying to make a determination as to what accommodations, if any, could be made, given what the request was.
And my last question has to do with, does reasonable accommodations include any type of additional time or time off needed to attend medical appointments?
So, because the way that the, the employees leave policy is set up, so you have safe and sick, you also have their regular sick time, and then we also have, which is the ESL, which is the Extended Sick Leave Policy, which depending on where they are, say they've exhausted all of their leave, depending on how much time they've been actually employed, how many hours have been accumulated during the course of the time they were employed, they would then be able to make a request, for lack of a better phrase, it would almost be like on borrowed time. They would be, right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, Councilman Torrance.
I'm happy to say that, because I will say my experience with that in city government was not the same. I will say that from being a person who was the spouse of someone who was recovering from it, in terms of when I was in the staff role in city government versus a council person, and then also dealing with a, my mother-in-law who was taking care of her husband. I say that because, not to throw your, your agency under the bus, but when my father-in-law had brain surgery, they said my, my mother-in-law could only use her sick leave for FMLA, not exhaust all of her time. And then I, and I think this goes back to that conversation, because across our different agencies, no one is consistently applying the rule. So I think that DHR might have to really do a deep dive to make sure that those who are the HR points of contact have those, because there are people who have leave and opportunity to use the leave that don't know that they can use their vacation time out of leave, they just know that they can only use sick leave, and that's what people are told, and then we're limiting people in terms of attributing them to extra hardship that they need to happen. And then the other piece is that, that communication isn't clear when it comes down to short-term disability versus long-term disability, because if you go out on a short-term disability and they still see that you have your vacation time, you have not used it, they don't actually issue a benefit yet. So I just want to make sure, because if we're offering these products in terms of not only the general package that we give for benefits for our employees, but outside of that, the additional products, we're costing them money for not having access to that additional product. So I just think that there might be a training that needs to happen.
Well, I, I can say comfortably and proudly that our, under the leadership and direction of Director Brinkley, that she has put great emphasis on making sure, particularly with policy and compliance, that we are continually updating, making sure that those policies are clear, concise, and we are serving the needs of the city and making sure there is appropriate interpretation and application of the policies that are there. And so on a regular basis, we are having regular weekly meetings and bi-weekly meetings in which we are educating all of our HR professionals and keeping them up to speed with what is happening locally at the state and federal level.
Have we thought about centralizing some of those functions? I'm just being very transparent, because that wasn't something that we discussed before with the prior director. And I say centralizing because if my leave is different than this leave here and there, and these are all federal things, I think things that are related to like federal rights that people have should be centralized, because that's a liability that's just out there hanging, because if we're treating people totally different, then that's a, that's a conversation that's different, that, that we need not let continue, because if you are just like this council, when we got new HR people, they had to learn everything that was city policies all over again, and then there are some people whose HRs operate totally different than the next HR. So I think in terms of continuity, in terms of policy-wise, I think certain functions should be centralized. So if you're applying for FMLA, that should be centralized to DHR, right? Not just left up to John Blue who sits in the agency and is only doing this as their secondary job, and they have something else to do. I just want to make sure that we are verbally transparent in capacity.
Yeah, and, and if I'm not mistaken, I think that came up in an audit or something like that, like during the DHR audits, and I do know that Deputy City Administrator Kearney, that is certainly something that she has been talking about, thinking about, and talking, certainly, Juliana, if you take that as like a note, then I can certainly flag for the Deputy City Administrator that that came up as a point of discussion in committee around the centralization of some of the HR practices with central HR as opposed to the individual HR practitioners within some of our city agencies.
I think that would be best, because I know that, and I didn't help someone navigate this, I only get, I only get six weeks rather than the twelve weeks, because I'm not a single father, right? Some people don't know that, they think that they get the whole three months, and we're not educating people on that because of FMLA being outdated as a law from the nineteen eighties. And I've, I've heard from someone who worked in the city agency, that they told them that they had three months, but they were married first, like, no, you don't, you get six weeks. So I think that we really need to have that conversation, especially with our bargaining unions, to say, hey, we're going to work to educate everybody across the board on this policy.
Thank you, duly noted.
Thank you all. Just one other question is regarding like oversight and how the process works. I know typically currently there's a process in which workers has complaints, they can go to the commission and file a complaint, just curious on what that process looks like, what, what other investigations you all currently kind of handle, and how you see this impacting your workload? I know you briefly touched on it during the testimony.
Yes, so I actually spoke with Chief Burton of the CRC directly on this topic. From her perspective, not only does she see the CRC division within OECD having more than adequate enough staff for the caseload they're currently managing, she also doesn't foresee the caseload for this specifically to increase in any like notable manner. Importantly to note, the majority, I don't have the exact number in front of me currently, I could get that to you after the hearing, but the majority of cases that the CRC reviews, I would approximate about ninety percent of them come from the EEOC deferred rather than direct cases that are submitted complaints through Baltimore City to the CRC. So in, in that vein, we don't foresee essentially the EEOC changing the, the dynamic of which cases that they refer to us based on this. It would be very minor, the, the, you know, additional caseload coming from Baltimore City, just based on the overall caseload of cases directly coming from Baltimore City being referred to the CRC. I could get a more, you know, definite projection from her directly based on their experiences of, of who reaches out to them. However, they have not had any, like, had a large number of people coming to the CRC, at least currently prior to this legislation being enacted, with issues related to not receiving proper pregnancy accommodations. So we believe we have full staff capacity and that it wouldn't be a significant caseload bump. Now, that isn't to say that there aren't, you know, violations that are occurring, and I think the bigger focus for the CRC in the, you know, foreseeable future, Councilwoman Porter talked about a thirty-eight status update, would be more so awareness and outreach, and that's been more of our current posture so far with the CRC, which is, you know, anything to, to raise awareness around your protections with the CRC and your ability to file directly to the commission, any issues with discrimination or, or lack of proper accommodations, because, you know, demonstrably by those caseload numbers, people across the city are not aware of those protections that they have, at least here within the city. So it's more so with this legislation and these pregnancy accommodations, along with all the other protections within Article Four and also Article Eleven of the code, it is a matter of raising awareness and getting out that, that memo essentially to, to city employees and just workers throughout the city that they are protected by the CRC, and they are now protected in this manner, before we can even approximate, you know, with any certainty what kind of caseload changes would happen with this legislation for, for city intake specifically.
And, and Mr. Chair, just to add to Zachary's point, and if you know before, I came to the mayor's office, I was at the Office of Equity and Civil Rights, and the, the process, because this is very important for the public, right, because it is not just city employees that can lodge complaints that are then investigated by the CRC. So first, how do you file a complaint, right? So you can go to civilrightsstopbaltimorecity.gov, you can go in person to Seventy East Redwood Street and go into the Office of Equity and Civil Rights, and they can help you file a complaint. You can only file a complaint of alleged discrimination under the subtitle if it occurred within a hundred and eighty days. So that's that.
I have a correct, three hundred now.
All right, we change it, yes. Councilwoman Porter changed it, actually. So three hundred days, and they do the investigation, they have a fact-finding hearing with the complainant, and then the commission kind of takes it from there, right? So that is the formal process for a person to launch a complaint, and then how the CRC investigates it, and then obviously they assign the manager, which I think is usually just Chief Burton, who is with that complaint in every step of the way throughout the process.
Now, thank you for that clarification, that's kind of one of the points I wanted to get to, is let people know how to, you know, file a complaint and how to utilize that resource. So thank you.
Thank you, Taylor.
Chair.
Yeah, Councilman Gray. Yeah, what I was going to say is what you guys literally just touched on, the next steps after this, when this is passed, is to, is to work with agencies, you know, I'll work with, with PISIT and do a video, but to make sure that people are aware of this, including this in the next rattle and roll, making sure that we have pamphlets in there to give to employers. We want to make sure, and we know that we're going to do our best on the city side, but we want to make sure that it just doesn't affect and touch and protect those that are just city employees. We want to make sure that if you're working at a corner store, if you're working on the top floor of the World Trade Center, wherever you are, you know that you're protected. And so I look forward to this, but I also want to thank my colleagues for your thoughtful questions and insight, and that was it, yeah, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further questions? All right, at this time, we'll entertain public testimony. The, the committee will hear those in the chamber first. If you're online, please raise, use the raise hand button to let staff know you wish to testify, and you will be recognized. Each member of the public will be recognized for two minutes, which will be shown on the Any public testimony? Great, we'll, we'll move on. I know there's been a few amendments that's been proposed, we'll kind of start with amendments. We can start with the sponsors amendments, that's in front of all the council folks, council members. Is there a motion to recommend the amendments favorably?
So moved.
In second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? All right. All right, amendments passed. All right, there's also another amendment, I believe, from, yes, the Law Department's amendments. Is there a motion to, is there a motion to accept amendments favorably?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All oppose? All motion carried. And I know Department of Resource had their amendments, I mean, DHR. We're going to start with Amendment One. Is there a motion to accept Amendment One?
So moved.
The second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All oppose?
Aye.
All oppose? Motion so carried. Amendment Two, is there a motion to accept Amendment Two?
So moved. Second.
A second? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All oppose? Motion so carried. And Amendment Three, is there a motion?
Yeah, I don't know the actual process here, but we like to, we'll withdraw amendment number three.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure. Got you. All right. Thank you for that clarification. Is there a motion to recommend the bill favorably with amendment Two?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, well, whoop, roll call, yes, roll call. We'll start with Chair, myself, Jermaine Jones, yea. Councilman Ryan Dorsey?
Yes.
Councilman James Torrance?
Yes.
Councilwoman Felicia Porter?
Yes.
All right. All right, with that said, the bill is passed, passed, and the bill shipped, and anything else, and there goes the second reader, that's it. And I now entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
All right, motion? All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you.